Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of March 11th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heebick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements and committee reports, I've got a couple of them. One announcement I'd like to make is there were a number of questions by members of the public on last week's March 4th meeting around short-term rentals and development potential at West Fifth Street Habitat for Humanity Project. And just on the, during the public comment period, it was stated about a certain number of units in Anacortes, a large number of those are vacant. This had to do with short-term rentals. Most recent census estimates are, per the 2022 census, there are estimated 8,522 units in the city limits, and that checks out with our fiber numbers because we like to track how many potential fiber customers we might have, so that checked. And of those units, 723 are typically vacant. Again, this info was sent out to council with links to more census data. If you want to geek out and you can go in deep on census data. On the, on the R, West Fifth Habitat project, so that is in the R2A zone, the city will assist with, with, assist Habitat for Humanity with a neighborhood meeting before any formal action is taken by the council, and we will formally notify any neighbors within 300 feet when that meeting should take place. So we'll let you know. We'll keep you in the loop. And, Anacortes, I've been asked a couple of times about the Anacortes Arch, where's the sign? We're going to try to get it back mid-month, but it'll probably be closer to the end of the month. That'll be back up and looking good, thanks to some work with the Anacortes Downtown Alliance. Let's see, our avenue, people want to know, especially because I put out a date of March 6th, and that date has gone by, but I also put a caveat on the weather for that one, and we did not have cooperative weather. We need, we need a couple of days of good weather to do the striping. Forecast is looking good for later on this week, and I'll go ahead and throw it out there and say Friday. So, depending on weather. All right, and you see, there's a new agenda item. Again, apologize for that last-minute ad. Skagit County update on the Skagit Dam federal relicensing, and that's 6B. We have a lot of our friends from the county here, so we figured we'd all put it together. So, that's it for me, and council, first up, 3A Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor Miller.
Oh, that would be Councilmember Cleveland McGrath, thank you.
Hey, so I'm, we redid the finance committees, or finance committee this year, so, yes. We had our last meeting on March 7th. It was Councilmember Moulton, Director Hoagland, and myself, and we actually invited the Parks Director to come in and speak with us because based on the, the initial thoughts about Habitat for Humanity and using that lot that was proposed a few weeks ago, the other component that was a major concern for that neighborhood was the fact that we have the other parcel that is a block or half a block away, that is a corner lot, and making sure that we take the steps necessary to figure out how to dedicate it as a parcel for the park, and then also, how are we going to fund that? As we continue to see an increase in density, we know that it's important that we have open space for those neighborhoods. So we, we had Mr. Lunsford come, and we, we talked about kind of phasing the park, where different pots of money are available, whether it's the Parks Foundation, whether it's REIT, whether it's other, other funds such as RCO, and whether or not it would qualify. So that was their first discussion. Then we moved on to talking a little bit about sales tax receipts and some, just kind of an update on that, and we're exploring, there's a little anomaly, and we want to make sure we understand why that's happening, so we talked a bit about that. And then we discussed staffing. We've got an open position, and because of that, it's a busy month, just as a point of interest for anyone who reads the packets ahead of time, that there will not be a check run, which essentially is the claims for April 8th. So it's missing. You aren't missing it. We are just going to skip that week because it's also payroll that week. And then we talked a little bit about, for our next meeting, we're going to talk about investment strategy for the city. I think that's about it.
Thank you. And next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The HACs committee met last Thursday at 9:00 AM, as we do weekly, meet Thursdays at 9:00 AM, and it was Councilmembers Cleland McGrath, Councilmember Walters, and myself, and Planning Director John Coleman. And we really did sort of a deep dive into some of the more technical aspects of what Volunteers of America will do as they move forward with a coordinated entry contract, and how they're interacting with providers around the county, the communication amongst them, and figuring out how to move forward as seamlessly as possible. So I had kind of given a review of that already at council, but we just went a little bit deeper at the HACs meeting, and that was it.
Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Planning Committee met right before this meeting, Ms. Cleland McGrath, Ms. Moulton, and myself. We talked about a number of things, beginning with the three planning processes that the Downtown Anacortes Alliance was intending to work on this year. As you might recall, those were proposed by the DAA last year. We put them into the Capital Facilities Plan and targeted them for this year. Those three projects are improvements to the downtown streetscape, we're talking Central Business District, north of the arch, improvements to parking downtown, we're talking striping, we're talking achieving more parking within the existing street, and the connection between Commercial Avenue and the Marina along Ninth Street, which is another project we've been talking about for more than 10 years, and is now coming forward in the context of the Ports-West Basin Plan. We had emphasized that we wanted to do these projects sooner rather than later because we have the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update next year, plus the ports development, and now we have the prospect of an event venue down there. We want to make sure that we have connectivity between the Marina and Commercial Avenue. Ninth Street's the obvious location, and we want to do some planning to make sure that that street is completely activated so that Marina patrons see that street and walk up the street to Commercial Avenue. Now, next question is how we implement that. Staff had proposed that the Downtown Anacortes Alliance simply take the lead on all of that, but that approach didn't survive first contact with the city attorney's office. So now we're back to square one, and we will, I guess, receive a briefing on what staff thinks is the best approach to figuring that out. But we talked a little bit about how we would like to define the scope of that and make sure that we're getting the outputs and outcomes that we want out of that planning effort. The property owner that, that owns the cinema building that sits on real property owned by the city has proposed a, an amendment to the city's lease with them. We heard that last week, and we talked about, or two weeks ago, and we talked about it again tonight. We recommend against their proposed lease amendment, and we understand that that will supposedly be coming to council for council's decision next week. We encourage that to happen. We don't anticipate you're going to like it either. Sooner we can get to a decision, the better. We talked a little bit about the Planning Department's implementation of SmartGov software. We had heard reports of some problems. We got a little bit of a tour of it. Staff explained how it's working. As a general matter, I think the report from staff is that the new software requires you to submit all the components of a complete application, and that might not be what most people are used to, but it also means that we can process applications more quickly if all the components are there. And then finally, we talked about the Comprehensive Plan Update. As you all might recall, that is scheduled for the end of June 2025, and recent state legislation just recently signed has extended that deadline to December 31st, 2025. So now, instead of 18 months, we've got two years to get that done. We spent a little bit of time looking at the map and trying to identify large parcels that could be used for additional housing. Talked a little bit about other development regulation changes that we are going to have to make, and including some additional new state legislation. One notable item that recently passed and is expected to be signed is a regulation prohibiting us from requiring garages or carports for off-street parking requirements. So the regulatory landscape is changing, and we are going to adapt to that. We already have been, but there will be more to come.
Okay, next up is Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So the Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday, March 5th, and it was myself, Councilmember Cleland McGrath, Chief Harris, Chief Floyd, and Mayor Miller. Chief Harris spoke about how six of the eight new hires are currently going through the academy, and that has been a great success, and graduation is going to be on Friday, April 12th at 5:00 PM. And one thing that they're adding to this is there used to be an annual award ceremony that would happen, and they are bringing that back. So there, in addition to some firefighter awards, there will also be some community life-saving awards and some recognition for some public that have done some great things throughout the year. Also, the 20th of May is going to be the final inspection of the new ladder truck, hopeful for a July, and hopeful for a July 1st deployment of the fourth unit. This is also the first time that they had sent recruits through the academy, and the reason they did that, rather than train them here in-house, is because it was more efficient, since there were so many going through. One of the things that Chief Harris pointed out that was also very helpful was that not only did it help to, to get the firefighters trained, but it also brought some attention to some other AFD procedures and policies, just some refreshers on some things, and some, some improvements in some other areas as well. Another thing that was spoken about was Chief Floyd talked about that we currently have two of the four new officers in the training, in, in field training right now. A fourth officer is currently at the academy and graduating in June, and then we have another job offer out to, to another officer. And then there's going to be more invitations for Oral Board interviews to, to fill the remaining seat. Also, there was a very informative and disturbing presentation about a new drug that is coming forward into communities in our area called Xylazine. You may know it by its street name of Trank, which is like a dirty version of fentanyl. So it's, I know, as if fentanyl isn't dirty enough in and of itself, now there's this dirty version, and they call it the zombie drug because it rots your actual flesh, and it's, it's, it's very disturbing. But what was, what was not good about it is the fact that there was a drug bust here in town, and this was where we actually recovered the very first of this drug in Skagit County, was at a, at a local bust here in Anacortes. So they, so there, there's a lot of work to be done there, and Chief Floyd is, is putting some plans together for that. They're also, and happier news, they're also looking at a succession plan for, for T-Bone. So that is our, of course, our, our fine dog, our officer, and he has about two years of service left. There, we're being asked to consider a dual-purpose dog, so right now, T-Bone only detects drugs, but there is a secondary training available for a tracking dog, which would be very helpful for the city. It would give the officers yet another tool at their disposal in fighting crime. And so that will be coming before us to consider as well. So two years left for T-Bone. I recommended a very big citywide Commercial Avenue parade for his retirement. We'll see, we'll see if that, we'll see if that goes over. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have it listed, but I believe the Personnel Committee did meet, so if there's somebody wants to make that report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Sure. I forgot about the Personnel Committee. Yes, we met on March 7th, and it was Mr. Fantini, Mr. Young, and myself, along with Ms. Shu. And so we kind of went over a number of recruiting points. There's kind of a, in, in line with the number of employees we have at the city, we've got some openings. We've got one in the Finance Department. We're, we're working towards the Recreation Coordinator doing, we've had a lot of interest in that, and they're continuing with interviews with that. There's the opening for the Assistant Coordinator for the Seniors Center, that's continuing. We have, fortunately, I'm going to say it again, filled all the existing police officer positions, and we are now hiring for the additional five that were provided by the levy, and that is going quite well. There are some other positions, such as a wastewater treatment plant position, firefighter position, a planner position, and then a library assistant. So we had a really good conversation about where we're at. We also discussed the Eden replacement and kind of the timeline for the request for proposals, which went out March 1st. We've been getting a lot, we've got an outside consultant helping us write that RFP, and because of that, we're getting a number of good questions from applicants who would like to provide a replacement for Eden. So we're really pleased with how that's going. The vendor questions are due by March 15th. We can answer questions through the 20th, and final proposals are due April 1st. So we're continuing to work with that, hoping to get into contract negotiations August or September of this year. So that's going, that's a huge project, and we're glad that it's going as well as it is. We also had the Museum Department head come and talk to us about restructuring. They've got a number of part-time positions, and they're considering restructuring a cup, and removing one position, combining another couple of positions to create a full-time position. So we really encouraged Mr. Lunsford to come when he does his update with the museum, since we're asking, since Mayor Miller's having all of the department heads come in and speak about their department, to please kind of expand on that. At first glance, with our committee, it made sense with what they were proposing, but it's always good. We feel that every department comes, and when there's a, when there's a new full-time position created, that we have full council understanding of what that will entail. We did our first NeoGov online recruiting, and that was for the Finance Manager position. So we're kind of doing some beta testing and, and working out what that looks like, but it seems to be a good option. And then finally, Allen and Unger are going to provide DEI training specifically about inclusive management, and that will be May 30th and May 31st. And everyone in the, the city will be participating, each, it'll be broken up kind of half and half, and for, I think it's half-day training. We've heard good things about it from other municipalities who have used this, this, and, and we're looking forward to seeing how it goes. I think that's about all we discussed.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I thought it would be important to mention that there was an event held called the Women of Anacortes. It was a celebration of women, and they selected 13 wonderful women in our city that has done some extraordinary things. And it was really a well-attended event, cross-spectrums from environmental to our former police chief, to so many that have done some extraordinary things within our city. And the reason behind it, and Lisa Rhodes, and I can't think of the other woman that pulled it together, but it was an extraordinary thing because what they wanted to do was to begin also celebrating all of the accomplishments of our local women here in Anacortes, and this was the first year. But it was 13 women that were selected, and they have done some extraordinary things. What you may see coming is like we have those sort of murals on the side of the wall. You will begin to see more of those around our city. And at some point, it'll also include, I think the museum has got many on their walking tour, but it will also include some people who've done some extraordinary things here in our city. So it was just a wonderful event held at the Croatian Center, and I, I challenge you to sort of look out for that. I think they've got the calendars and a story behind it, but of course, our museum director was there because his wife was one of the people that were being celebrated. So I thought it was a wonderful thing. On a separate note, and I am, the council here, in my opinion, have done, we have an extraordinary council. We really do. And we work incredibly hard for the service of the people of Anacortes. We do. And all of us sometimes have different opinions on some things, but we're united in our service to you. The challenge that I'm saying to the rest of council is that sometimes we've got to figure out a way to make sure all seven members are included in decisions that we're making, and that before we get to any negotiations, I would prefer that we have some type of way that we are all sort of kept up to speed. And then when that happens, even though things are coming to council, like you've already said it will happen, what we can do is have a discussion. And so when those meetings take place, you take with you the sentiment of seven members. And then within that, you negotiate from that, and you bring back the sentiment of that other side. I know that none of this is about anything other than really working incredibly hard to give service to our public because it's a wonderful thing. I personally like it when we're having negotiations. I don't want to be on the tail end in the negotiations. I like being in the front end. And so if you are the negotiator, you go and you present all seven opinions. So I'm just issuing that as a challenge because I know all the hearts are good, and we've done some extraordinary stuff. So I thought I needed to put that on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other announcements and committee reports I may have missed? Okay, we'll move on to Item 4, which is Public Comment. Any member of the public wish to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda? We do have a couple items that are asterisk for members of the public to engage, so we look forward to that if you're interested. But I have one member signed up for the public comment, and so you always get to go first, and because you signed up, Linnea McCord, and the topic is spending. And a name and city for the record, please. Make sure the light's on.
There we go. All right, Linnea McCord from Anacortes. Well, last week, I mentioned that 2024 is not going to be like any other's year. Whatever spending the city of Anacortes may have deemed reasonable in the past is likely to become very unreasonable and totally inadvisable in today's volatile, financially stressed environment. We'll start with the federal deficit. It's now a staggering 34 trillion. It's up from just 6 trillion in 2000. The debt continues to grow at the astronomical rate of another trillion dollars every 100 days. Added to this, we are already paying $1 trillion in interest on that gargantuan debt, adding more and more debt to the total. This is unsustainable. Too many post-World War II Americans have become complacent because they have no idea what a trillion is. So here's a sample. A million seconds, just over 11 years. A billion seconds, just under 32 years. A trillion seconds, just under 32,000 years. You get the picture. Ordinary Americans are facing skyrocketing mortgages, rent, food, and gas prices, utility increases, and property tax escalations. They're, they're hitting the breaking point. For the first time in history, credit card debt in America has topped $1 trillion. Mortgage debt surpassed 13 trillion back in 2022. Thousand-dollar car payments, car defaults. 44 million Americans owe 1.7 trillion in student loans. Banking crisis 2.0 is getting underway, and in January, a billionaire CEO of Cantor Fitzgerald, which is a global banking and investment bank, predicted staggering defaults of a trillion dollars in commercial real estate in the next 18 to 24 months. 3.1 trillion in corporate debt is coming due from 2023 to 2025. A whopping 38% of companies are saying they're likely to have further layoffs, and 52% are considering a hiring freeze. The Anacortes City Council has already been back at the public trough to ask for more money for firefighters, permanently raising our property taxes to pay for this. Voters have noticed a pattern. Firefighters, police, and emergency medical personnel are being used to convince voters to cough up more money. That strategy is likely to be a lot less effective as more and more Americans are watching much more carefully what all levels of their governments are doing and not doing. Under these extreme financial circumstances, it won't matter what good reason any of the government entities suggest to spend money right now. What I would caution you is also, Washington State is following the destructive policies of California. Here's what had happened. They went from projecting a $97.5 billion surplus to a $73 billion deficit. It can happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment that didn't sign up? And checking in online. Okay, we will move on to our Consent Agenda, Item 5A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through E.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to Item 6, which is Other Business, 6A. This is the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce presentation. This is a discussion item and open for public comment. Mr. Coleman's going to introduce. All right.
Hi, just a quick introduction. Today we have with us Jessica Kaiser, President of the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce, and Elizabeth Tyler, the Marketing and Membership Director. They're going to be speaking today about how they spend some of our LTAC funds that are given to the chamber. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Hello. Thank you for that lovely introduction. Thank you, guys, for having us out to kind of talk a little bit more in detail about what we have been doing this past year, a little bit about the chamber for those who don't know us as well. Myself, Jessica Kaiser, I'm President/CEO, and this is Elizabeth Tyler, our Marketing and Membership Director, and we also have Megan Angier, who's our Operations Director. A little bit more about me. So I had a screen printing business for 15 years, which grew my respect for business owners, and then was elected to, two terms on city council member, as a city council member, which grew my respect for city council members. And I love golf because it's a sport I will never master, and nothing that I love more than my blended family of seven. So a little bit about the chamber. I know we talked a little bit about this last year as well, but to kind of just touch base again, the primary role of a Chamber of Commerce is to help build a strong economy. The Chamber doesn't do that by directly starting up a new business, creating jobs, or exporting products, but it does do it by making it easier for local businesses to do business. However, the Chamber doesn't do this alone. There are a variety of organizations that assist businesses, and the Chamber often partners with these organizations for the betterment of the community. In addition, the Chamber offers a variety of programs to help the local business community, like monthly networking events, that help the Chamber members make new business connections, and educational events on subjects important to local businesses. As a Chamber of Commerce, we have nearly 400 business members in and around the Anacortes area, and although we make it our mission to serve the business community as a whole, we love to spoil our members. We also We also wear three hats at our chamber, kind of explaining the chamber hat already. We also have the sub-agency, the Department of Licensing, which has gotten a lot of publicity lately. Just as a quick update, we are fully staffed again and everybody is in training and we are hoping to be open within three to six months. We also have our DMO hat, which is the Destination Marketing Organization, where we are able to do the tourism and branding of Anacortes. It's ran and managed by us, but the state RCWs dictate the direct oversight because it's grant funded. A little bit about our Board of Directors. We have 22 board members from all different backgrounds, fields and areas and industries. Some of our community events, the top ones are the ones we partner with other organizations. The Nautical Treasure Hunt is coming up here on April 19th. We're partnering with the Arts Festival. The Earth Day Celebration, April 20th, that's going to be in partnership with Downtown Alliance, Luminary Parade and then Procession of the Species. Boat and Yacht Show is in partnership with NMTA and then the Marine Trades Committee. And then, of course, you know about Waterfront Festival, Beer on the Pier and Coastal Christmas and then next year, Uncorked. A little overview of the visitors' budget so that you guys could kind of see the details of what we are spending the visitor LTAC grant on. First is our Visitor Information Center, which is fully volunteer run by 15 fabulous volunteers, some of which are here tonight. Wonderful. We are open every day of the week and last year we had over 7,000 visitors walk in, which was up 55% from the year before. So we're definitely seeing a nice trend of going up. The volunteers there are in charge of greeting and tracking out-of-town visitors and they track everything from where they're coming from, what they're in town for, are they staying overnight and is it paid lodging? Little bit of information on the visitor locations. So this is the stats from all 2023 visitors. So if you add up the yellow, the blue and the green, that shows that over 73% of our Anacortes visitors come from over 50-plus miles away. Little bit on visitor information interests. Most visitors come in to learn more about the various activities going on in town via the brochures we offer. So the VIC brochures cover a ton of activities, including the most requested information, which is about museums, whale watching, local parks, national and state parks and the marinas. Public restroom is something we've also talked about a couple times, so I'm going to give you guys an update on that. It's still open every day and we do have the auto lock set to open up automatically at 9:00 AM and close at 5:00 PM every day. These restrooms are cleaned and maintained by the chamber with the LTAC funds. And since we added the super bright motion light on the outside nook and the chamber staff has been going by and checking it every single night when they leave, we haven't had any new vandalism. Also under this grant is our fabulous Coastal Christmas Tree Lighting Event. We, this grant covers keeping the tree maintenance, the 26-foot lit tree, any lights needed, event setup for the day of, horse-drawn trolley, we have all of December, the stage risers and canopy for the singers the night of. It's been a great event and it seems to be growing. Quite wet last year. We also cover the beautification items for downtown with the LTAC grant. So the lighted wreaths, lighted trees, lighted ornaments, and then of course the hanging flowers and then banners, tourism banners, which is a great segue into tourism side with Ms. Elizabeth.
Thank you. I will start out with the overview of our marketing budget. Last year, we utilized most of our advertising funds for print and digital advertising. Forty percent of our funds were for print advertising and 43% were for digital ads. For 2024, we are increasing the digital advertising ratio by about 10%. The estimated distribution for our 2024 marketing plan is 40 million impressions. Here are some of the advertising agencies we work with. I will just highlight a couple. Bonneville International manages our geofencing campaigns and YouTube campaigns. Their advertising efforts alone bring in more than 200,000 impressions each month. Because we've had great success with their team and their advertising products, we are expanding our digital efforts with them in 2024 to add email and more display advertising. Seattle Media Solutions publishes the Seattle Times and last year they helped us write and publish six articles. Each one featured different local businesses, events and tourist attractions. And between Seattle Times newsletter boosts, social media boosts and hosting the article on their website, each article delivered on average 2 million impressions. With digital advertising, you can really target any demographic that you want to. We currently target what our advertisers and research has shown to be the most effective, which is about 60% women, 40% men, adults older than 25, families, retirees and people with an interest in outdoor recreation, boating, shopping and traveling. In 2024, we want to expand our targeting. We will begin targeting more diverse people who attend or show interest in things like Seattle Pride Parade, AAPI Heritage Month and Black History Month celebrations and Native American events. This not only helps brand Anacortes as a community that welcomes everyone, it also supports our goal of increasing diversity in the type of visitor that comes to town. In 2024, we will also intentionally expand the representation of any images that feature people in our marketing campaigns to resonate more with diverse individuals. The Experience Anacortes brochure is a print publication. It is distributed across the ferry terminals, ferries and visitor centers in Washington, especially along the I-5 corridor. Its reach and demographic is one of our top print placements. For commercial advertising, in 2022, our King Five Evening Specials were a huge success and so we are doing another one in fall 2024. We continue to receive amazing feedback from local business owners in town who are featured on the show. And our billboard on Highway 20 is viewed by everyone traveling into Anacortes, whether they are tourists going to the San Juan Islands or passing through to Oak Harbor or South Whidbe Island. Washington State Transportation estimates an average of over 10,000 vehicles who drive in Anacortes to access the San Juan Islands every day. We have applied and were accepted to continue the Port of Seattle Tourism Spotlight Program, where we get the billboard in the Sea-Tac Airport. Our billboard will be installed for quarter two, so keep an eye out if you're traveling soon. The Port of Seattle estimates over 4 million impressions are made per month on a billboard in the airport. We are also continuing our advertisement strategy for the Maritime Strategic Plan Support with our print ads and articles in these publications. We often get a lot of positive feedback from boaters who saw our ads in these magazines. We were even named in the Boat U.S. Magazine as a top 10 boating town last year. For 2024, we are continuing our ads featured in the special 48 North Boat Show issue. These are our 2023 event survey results. Just a couple highlights. 62% of uncorked attendees said they had a meal or drink before or after the event in town. 72% from Beer on the Pier said they had a meal or drinks in town before or after the event. It was estimated that $80,000 was spent in town from uncorked and $183,400 was spent in town from Beer on the Pier. 30% of attendees for uncorked came from over 50 miles away and 21% of attendees for Beer on the Pier came from over 50 miles away. We maintain these technology services. We send the Experience Anacortes newsletter to 16,000 subscribers every other month via MailChimp, which is an email marketing platform. The screenshot above is an example of one of our recent newsletters. The newsletters highlight community tourism events and anyone can submit events to our calendar to be approved and featured on our website and newsletter. We use Survey Monkey to send our post-event surveys to gather data on tourism. Anacortes.org is hosted through Bluehost servers and we maintain several social media accounts. Our Beer on the Pier Facebook reach has increased by 2,000% this year from social media campaigns before and during the event. We use local photographers for the content for the social media campaigns. This is the main homepage of Anacortes.org, the main tourism website. We rotate the homepage images seasonally. And this is the Business Directory menu. These categories were specifically developed based on top tourism attractions. And this is a snapshot of the Business Directory listings. You can go directly to their website from here or view their profile to learn more. All Anacortes businesses can have a listing on this community website and chamber members are noted with a star. This is an example of one of the listings. Businesses can add multiple pictures and update their info anytime with their login. They can upload a description, their hours, website, phone number, address and social media links. Any local business can also submit events to the community event calendar at no cost by the organization themselves. It is very user-friendly. Last year, Anacortes.org published over 350 local events. Check out Anacortes.org backslash events and look for the yellow submit button if you'd like to submit an event. The community calendar is one of the top visited pages. We use the events calendar as one of the landing pages for our digital ads. We spend 50% of our marketing budget on digital advertising with a plan to increase that ratio every year. So it's a really great marketing opportunity for all local businesses. And then here is a snapshot of the website stats. Anacortes.org had over 260,000 page views in 2023. The increase in views from 2022 to 2023 can be attributed directly to our digital marketing Thank you. Does the council have any questions?
Well, thank you for the great presentation and thanks for being a great partner with the city and especially thank you for making sure the scissors are sharp because it's really important when I'm out doing ribbon cuttings are, it's kind of a, you know, it's a not objective measure necessarily, but if I'm not doing ribbon cuttings, then it's not necessarily good for business. So I've been out doing a lot of ribbon cutting, so thanks for, for that. Okay, so I know there's going to be questions from council, but any, go ahead, council? Or I can go to the public first or?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, you know, as always. I really, really, really appreciate the focus of the chamber on tourism, also on giving service to the people that come to our town. I love the prism with which you're looking at, how we're going about things. I know there's a discussion of, you know, whether or not everything should be digital or not. And, you know, I think that the world is going digital, but everybody's not there now. We've got a population, what, 40% above 50? And, you know, the idea that having that center there is warming, welcoming and a good thing. I wanted to also commend you on the news stories that's been coming out. You know, I think Channel 5 or one or the other, it was a huge thing. Everybody was talking about it in the town, just some good stuff and the people that are choosing to come here. And I wanted to sort of thank you for that. I think that there's been some discussions about the use of funds and I loved how you brought up not only the bathroom, but you also mentioned the solution that was put in and the current effect of that solution that was put in. So that was another issue that I think was solved. I do think though, as one of the reasons that I am a supporter of, you know, the, the visitor center and the work that you guys are doing is that as we move forward as a city and begin talking about event space, because that was also another big discussion that's, you know, the, the council, mayor, as well as the port are working together on trying to find a solution that can help our town that's more than just 100 people but can somewhere address the 400 or more people that are coming to our town or may want to come in the future. And so I think that that's just such a, a good thing. But I would love for you to speak just for a second on within event center space and, you know, events coming, not just the existing ones we know about, but quite honestly, any city that's doing an event center space has to try to look into the future to say what do they want to come or what other people in the future may want to come. So part of that is the benefit and the symbiotic relationship between the event center space and also a center that you can give brochures about, about the rest of the stuff. So those two really do work hand in hand and in my opinion, I think that one without the other is, doesn't work. And so that's why when you have a volunteer space and the team that you do have and people wanting to come in to get brochures and find out about whatever else is going on, I just simply don't believe that it should be digital and so I appreciate that you're doing the best of both. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for mentioning the word volunteers because I failed to thank the many volunteers that helped the chamber. I know the chamber can't, much like the city, we have a lot of volunteer committees and, and boards and commissions and I know the chamber operates with a lot of volunteers, especially the VIC that's often the face of the city, the first interaction with somebody in the city. So thank you for that. All right.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
So first of all, I just wanted to say it was so nice to look at that presentation and see like what a beautiful place we live in. I mean, it made me want to continue to live here, so that's, that's great. But, so I've been involved a lot with the chamber through the years. I even got Mayor Miller to sing at the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony one year. That was quite fun. And I think that the campaigns are awesome and, and great. And I'm glad to see that we're increasing by 55% the visitors into the visitor center. I mean, welcoming people to Anacortes, making sure it's open and so they have something that is great. I do have a couple questions about the marketing a little bit and I would totally understand, having worked in marketing for several years myself, if you don't have these answers right now, but it's just something I'd, I'd like to hear more about. Impressions are super awesome. More impressions, it's a drip campaign, people see it, they feel it, they want to come. It's, it's constant in their mind. I'm also curious about if there's any information that we're gathering about actual engagement of the, the impressions, like people clicking on the ads. I don't know if the Seattle Times with the articles that they carry online, if they also provide, they give the information on impressions, do they also provide information with, you know, the engagement? Are people clicking on them or they?
Yes, so we do collect data from the digital advertisers that provide the statistics on the click-through rates. We do a little bit of a more detailed reporting at our tourism committee meetings every other month. The click-through rates, for example, from the Seattle Times tend to be about double the industry standard. Same with our YouTube ads, which is another large digital campaign that we run, we have about a 60% click-through rate and that's about double the industry standard for tourism advertising.
That's really good. So, and I also was just curious about, are there any, we, we do a lot of brochures that we put out there. I was, I was interested, I thought we would get more action on the events when you put up the bar graph and most of it is people wanting to come and get the brochures, which is understandable. Are we carrying those brochures that have QR codes on them as well? And do those click through to like the, the main website page and all that or what's, what's kind of the, what is the brochure? How, how does that?
So the QR codes on the brochures click through directly to the business or the organization of the brochure. So we use it a ton for like menus, so that way we're not having to reprint restaurant menus. And so we've got every single restaurant listed by type of food with QR codes, so people can just scan it right there. That's just one example.
Awesome. And then you talked about, a little bit about, I'm sorry. You, you talked a little bit about kind of measuring the website traffic and that is also increasing, which is really, really great. I'm just curious, in addition to- I'm just curious, in addition to the calendar, are there any other areas of the website that you see particularly getting a lot of traffic?
So besides the main landing page of the calendar, which was that monthly overview you saw, we're seeing the individual events themselves actually increase in traffic. Waterfront Festival specifically last year had a large increase in traffic. And then also the Business Directory landing page and the Ferry page are also top landing pages that see growth every year.
Okay. And then my last question, sorry, I'm a geek for the marketing stuff, is one of the, you know, we, since this is about budgeting and giving money through LTAC and whatnot, I'm just curious, you know, sixty percent, you know, double the industry standard is really great for a click-through rate. I know sometimes on their reports, they'll give us like a cost per click. Is that something that comes through on those reports also?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but if you email me, I have done a cost analysis on our cost per impression, that I have the number somewhere. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Great, I will, I will do that.
I want to say it's less than a cent per impression, though.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. And sorry for shaking my head when you said something about me singing, because I don't think any objective observer would call that singing. All right. Any other questions for Chamber folks? Oh, okay, sorry, did I miss the public? Come on, come on up, yep, it's open for public comment.
Pat Gardner, Anacortes, mayor, council members. The chamber does a wonderful job. I do an event section in a big newsletter for my community. And I get on your calendar, and I know some months it's rather bleak, because there's not a lot going on. But I, like, this is March. I'm starting to plan April's newsletter. And I click to April around the twentieth of the previous month or so, and I don't see anything in April yet. And I'm sure you have information for the next month. And it should, I would hope to see it on the calendar, but I don't until the last minute or else I click on, in April, on April, then I see it, and it's too late. And sometimes people plan in advance what they're going to do or that month, if they have company or visitors from out of town or whatever. But I would hope to see that information in advance, because I've been doing this for a few years, and I've called the office, and they don't have anything. But then when the month comes up, it's there. So it'd be nice to see it in advance, you know, because it would help my job or my voluntary. So anyway, thank you very much, and thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to talk, Chamber? All right. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing from you all some more. Okay, next up is item six B. This is a Skagit County update on Skagit Dam federal relicensing. And this is a discussion item. And Ms. Wetnam will introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I'm here just in an introductory capacity. So tonight, we're joined from Skagit County and the Skagit Drainage and Irrigation District Consortium by Commissioner Ron Wiesen with Skagit County, Will Hone, the chief civil deputy attorney at the Skagit County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and Jenna Freeble, who is the executive director of the Skagit Drainage and Irrigation District Consortium. And they're here to provide the council with an update on the Seattle City Light FERC relicensing process. So with that, I will turn it over to our guests. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wiesen, welcome.
Thank you very much. See if I'm smart enough to make this work. Probably not. Just thank you very much. This is just an update of what's going on with this Seattle City Light FERC relicensing. We had a very small team that worked on this. We have a tentative settlement agreement with Seattle. And so it's really important, and we really appreciate having the support of our local providers. I can Anacortes here. The county partners, like I said, had a tentative, have a tentative agreement with Seattle City Light on flood control. This is very important for our city partners, Anacortes with the water treatment plant on the river, Burlington, Mount Vernon, and Sidoole also, Concrete, Hamilton, and Lyman. Our EMS facilities are in the floodplain area, including our fire and our public works facilities and police and hospital areas. The pink on that map there shows the floodplain in Skagit County. And so it's a large area that is directly affected by having extra flood control. Also, as you all know, Highway five and nine, or Highway twenty and nine, and five thirty-six and Highway eleven are all in that area. And also Puget Sound Energy has a lot of substations and infrastructure taking place in this area. The Skagit County was able to make this happen with the partnership of the Drainage Consortium, the Dyke districts, and the cities and the county, coming together with a good message for all of us, was very successful in this tentative agreement. These are the primary things we're trying to do, this relicensing. In nineteen forty-six, the Army Corps suggested that they would get two hundred acre-feet of flood storage, but we'd never received that at that time. At that time, it was a hundred and twenty acre-feet of storage on December first. We were asking to make that reduction happen earlier, and so we'd have more storage when we get the flood issues and the rain events. Current operations, you have to deal with the Fish Settlement Agreement and required for recreations, and the drawdown starts earlier than it had in the past. More flood storage is available than required under the current license. November of 2021, we had that large flood. We saw a huge amount of benefit to the lower valley here, because they happen to have a lot of extra storage capacity behind the dams up there. So the downtown areas were definitely benefited to have that extra storage. The current operations, flood risk has a concern to all of us in the county here. And the earlier seasonal drawdown on the dams will have more capacity during the, seems to be wetter and earlier flood events that we are getting in Skagit County. Larger inflows are coming in as some of those flood events, we get a lot of water coming in, out of the, into the watershed, and it's going into the dams. And because they have more capacity up there, it's going to be able to benefit to us.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Sorry to interrupt you for just a second, but you'd mentioned the November 2021 flood event. Just to bring it all home for everybody, if the gauge in Mount Vernon had hit the estimates that they were expecting, or if the flood storage had not been available, I believe that what we had calculated is that we would have overtopped the water treatment plant, our water treatment plant. And thank you for nodding in agreement. Don't get that often. If that happens, you can't just turn it back on. It has to be cleaned, it has to be emptied. Damage has to be repaired. And we serve fifty or sixty thousand people with that water treatment plant. So I hope that that helps bring it home for everybody, that it affects Anacortes significantly, but it also affects the rest of the region whom we serve significantly, among all the other effects, which I'm sure we'll get to.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Ryan. And also Puget Sound Energy, all the substations and so forth that they have down in that area. They don't have spare parts around either if those things fry because of the high water level. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Freeble. This is Daryl Hamburg with the Dyke District Partnership, sort of the leader of this whole thing. Do you want me to?
Yeah, just, I'm also the Director of Operations for Dyke District Seventeen that protects the Anacortes Water Treatment Plant. So I'm in it with you.
Okay, we're just going to go over a review. We were here two years ago when we started negotiating with City Light. So we're going to skip some of the overview, but just to remind you where we started. So we're looking for more storage, so more storage at Ross and earlier, beginning to the drawdown, so that the storage is available earlier in the flood season. The current license is a hundred and twenty thousand acre-feet by December first. And as Commissioner Wiesen went over, this is really consistent with the project purpose. Ross was, in part, authorized to provide flood risk reduction for the lower communities. It's consistent with our trend of earlier floods and current operations. And so we wanted to thank you for the letter that the city provided supporting our effort to negotiate better flood storage for the communities. It really made a difference when we filed it with FERC.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Hey, sorry to interrupt Ms. Freeble, but I just have a question about the, could you describe the drawdown process a little bit? Could you remind us how that works, just an overview?
Yeah. So in the summertime, Ross is held at a constant elevation for recreational purposes. And in the fall, they draw Ross down, which means they have more water going out of Ross than what's coming in. So the water level goes down. And in part, that's done to provide more flow for fisheries resources, so spawning of salmon below the dam. They can use the water stored in Ross to increase flows above what would maybe naturally occur and provide more predictable flows for salmon spawning. Once they establish what those flows are, they continue to draw Ross down. It increases the amount of storage for floods, but it also incubates the salmon eggs that are in the gravel until they have a chance to emerge.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Okay, so this is just a little bit of the detail. Most of you, or many of you, have seen this before. But, so the first element is earlier drawdown, which means we want the new license to have full flood storage by November first. So if you remember, the current license, you don't have flood storage until December first. And this is just a summary of the floods that we've experienced in Skagit County since 1990, major floods. So these are not just every year, every other year, nineteen ninety, ninety-five, two thousand and three, and the most recent seventeen and twenty-one. What you'll notice is that these floods are in October and November. So it's really important to have the flood storage date moved earlier. And this is just an example of why. The second piece of our request was to increase the amount of storage at Ross. So the left picture is from 2021, and what you'll notice is that Ross is full. Baker was full, and they're dumping water. They can't hold it anymore. And this tends to exacerbate flooding downstream, because all of the water from the Sock and the Skagit here at the same time, which means the floods could be higher. So when you have more storage at Ross, you can delay that flood, and you might have a longer flood in the lower valley, but you're not overtopping the levees. That's just a picture from 2021 of the Mount Vernon flood wall. It was deployed and did not have eight feet of freeboard, which is what the Corps of Engineers was estimating would have been the flood stage without the storage at the dams and reservoirs. And, you know, this, Daryl, probably understated, you know, the importance of storage in that twenty-one flood. The water was, what, you had not a lot of freeboard at the levee section by your wastewater, by your water treatment plant.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. Just had a question of clarity. You know, as you go back and forth in explaining, storage means one thing. And so I'm not sure if I'm clear on what you mean by storage. And then I thought if I wasn't as clear, I'm not sure if the public would be clear as to what you mean by storage and how that helps. So if you just give a little bit of what that is, and that'll put it in context.
So in the context that we use storage in is it's the abilities for the dams to hold event waters. In other words, waters from an atmospheric river coming into the watershed, being able to hold that so that water doesn't come directly down on the lower delta. And the more that you have, the more you can cut off that volume of water that comes through with an atmospheric river.
Does that help? And we're just kind of running through this at a high level. So since we met with you, we filed our comments on the final license application with a formal request to consider two hundred thousand acre-feet by November first. And really, we have invested a tremendous amount of time working with other stakeholders at the comprehensive settlement table during the summer of 2023 in an effort to get to a win-win solution. We worked, the county, the Dyke Partnership and the consortium, worked really closely with tribes, National Park Service, and resource agencies to develop what we call the Ross Operations Integrated Plan. So we're backing off a little bit from our request for flood storage and trying to incorporate other issues, interests. So variable pool at Ross, which means the National Park Service would have a little bit more flexibility in how they manage Ross. They could draw it down to encourage primary production. And that would help facilitate earlier drawdown for flood control, so those were aligned. The fisheries settlement issues continue to be a high priority for tribal and resource agencies. And so we are working with them to understand additional fisheries objectives and making sure that the fisheries settlement agreement was preserved, if that was the highest priority. In the fall of 2023, it was becoming clear that it would be difficult to get to a full comprehensive settlement agreement. There's a lot of diverse stakeholders at the table. We made a presentation of our Ross Integrated Plan. It was really well-received. And ultimately, that's what led to the tentative settlement agreement just on flood control that Daryl and the Board of County Commissioners reached late in December. So this was just a graphic that kind of explains what the Ross Integrated Operation Plans was consisting of. So you can see, instead of having Ross at a constant elevation, there was some flexibility there. And then again, you're seeing the drawdown, which matches the fish goals for spawning and incubation flows. But because you have some flexibility in Ross, and you have a longer period to draw Ross down, we were meeting our objectives for flood storage with an operational buffer. And so we were compromising a little bit in what's called hard storage or mandated storage to allow an operational buffer, which allows flexibility. And this is just sort of a cross-section of what, you know, Ross would look like. So ultimately, where we ended up, and this is our tentative flood risk settlement. And Will, at the end, will talk a little bit about the steps going forward. So this graphic shows in the black line the current license on how City Light has to manage Ross. So they hold it at sixteen oh eight elevation in the summer. You can see they start drawing it down in late September, early October, and that by December one, you get full storage. The proposed license is a much more aggressive draft, which means drawing Ross down to get hard storage of a hundred and forty thousand acre-feet by November first. hard storage of 140,000 acre feet by November 1st. The operational buffer is, provides an additional 165 or total 165. The other great thing about this is that Darrell managed to negotiate, you know, there's a committee that will make decisions about when City Light is allowed to go into that operational buffer space. The Dyke Partnership and the county will have seats on that committee, as will the Corps of Engineers, so that fisheries and other interests, as well as flood control interests are being balanced in that space. And I guess a way to think about that space is if they're below it and there's an atmospheric river that comes in, and they need to push into that, but there's a forecast for cold, you know, cold and clear after that storm, then people can collectively make a decision about, you know, there's no risk of a second flood coming. Take your time to evacuate that space so that you can be mindful of other objectives. In reality, City Light will probably operate anywhere from three to five feet below that operational buffer to get extra flexibility, and this will just help them with compliance. And overall, that would give the total of 200,000 acre feet by November 1, which is a big gain for flood risk reduction. So like I said, this settlement, tentative settlement agreement was really well supported by the state, federal, and tribal governments that sit in the comprehensive settlement table meeting. And we've invested eight months on this. So this is just kind of the numbers game of where we landed. So we'll just look at November 1. Under the current license, there'd only be 43,000 acre feet of storage mandated by that time. The hard storage is 140. The total storage is 165, just with the buffer. That's an extra 97,000 acre feet. So what does that mean? Currently, Baker Lake is the other reservoir that provides flood storage. They provide 73,000 acre feet of flood storage. So it's the equivalent of more than Baker Lake in storage for flood control, which is, again, it's a really big improvement on flood risk reduction. So I'm going to let Darrell talk just a little bit about the negotiations part and the role of the partnership.
Yeah, no problem. So the negotiations was an interesting process. I mean, there was a lot of different interests that were in the room. And we, when we came in with our 200,000 acre feet, you know, that was, you kind of have to figure you're going to be negotiating off from that. That's, you come out with your want, right? And you try to negotiate to your need. The way this worked out, it actually worked out that our want and our need came out the same, it just in a different graph than we originally proposed. If you look at this, the 140,000 acre feet by November is the hard storage. That's, that is storage that they cannot, if they go into it, the Corps takes over and the Corps mandates them to get out of it in a certain timeframe. So that is, that is controlled by the Corps of Engineers through the operations of the FERC license. That 15,000 acre feet, that is the 165, that is controlled by, like Jenna says, in a committee fashion. So, and it's, and it's based on the current event that pushed it in there, and what the past forecast will be, and then what impacts will be to either natural impacts or human impacts. And so as a committee, we make the decisions on how fast we draw, that City Light draws out of that in a, in a group fashion, which is, it's a healthy way of doing it. In our negotiations, City Light did agree with us that they will stay below that 165 unless they absolutely need to get into it. And they'll try to keep a cushion of like three to five feet, which inevitably gets us close to our 200,000. In 2021, during that flood, Seattle City Light had 170,000 acre feet of storage. And at that 170,000 acre feet, when, when the event was over and they needed to evacuate, they were at their absolute limits. They could not hold any more water. So it's imperative that we took this to a level to where we could get some positive insurance. And the positive insurance, like I said, is the 140 earlier, and then we have the ability to negotiate in that, the rest of that range. It's a, it's a real win-win for us. One of the things that, that I really want to tell you that's very impressive about this is that there hasn't been a storage change on the Skagit for any dam since the inception of dams on the Skagit River. This is monumental. And we're all very proud of ourselves, of course, but we're also thankful of our cities because the letter that you sent of support, not only for the 200,000, but also for the negotiated amount that the mayor signed, it made it happen. And that's why we're here today, is to thank you and to celebrate what we have accomplished to this point. Now, the next steps are, is how do we get it into the license? And I'm going to turn that over to Will.
Okay, and just, while Will's coming up here, just, if you just tuned in, members of the public, and wonder why we're talking about all this flood storage, really great stuff, and appreciate all the work that was done. But again, I think it was mentioned, we have 56,000 water customers. And I always remind the negotiating team that it's not just Skagit County, it's Island County that cares a lot about it too, with tens of thousands of water customers out there too. But you're going to talk about the very complex next phase.
Right. Well, hopefully it won't be complex. Thank you, Mayor. Will Honi, Skagit County Prosecutor's Office. Let's see, how do we get to the, I'm going backwards. Well, I'll pause on this for a minute, actually. This, you know, I wanted to underscore what Darrell Hamburg said. This is, you know, these dams were built in the 40s, and we ended up with very little flood storage in the early part of the year. And we're able to sort that out as a team. This is the Dyking Districts and the county working together with the tribes, particularly the Upper Skagit. They're the, you know, they're the principal tribe in the Upper River Basin, of course. And we work very closely with them and the National Park Service, and we've done it really efficiently. You know, we weren't happy with what Seattle City Light was, was, was doing. And instead of complaining, what we did is came up with our own plan. You know, it's kind of a, a good rule, is just provide a better service, provide a better product. And that's what we did. We came up with our own operations model, and I think we're into this, under $150,000. And anybody that's been involved in huge, complex legal processes understands that's, you can spend a lot more than that in a hurry. So we feel like we're in a pretty good spot with that. You know, the remaining piece that's a challenge within the, oh, and by, I guess another thing, from the environmental perspective, I think one of the things that came up in the course of this and negotiating flood storage was, well, you know, we shouldn't give any more flood storage. We didn't say this, but it was said, so I won't attribute it to anybody. We shouldn't provide any more flood storage because these locals are just going to, you know, sprawl across the flood plain and build more stuff. And, you know, from the standpoint of climate change, you know, riverine flooding, what we found out is, it's likely to be a little earlier, and it's likely to be a little bit bigger, but not tremendously so, is what the science reflects. And, you know, so the very best thing we can do, and, and, you know, we've got all this farmland that we've protected, and farmland is actually not that hurt by flooding. You know, there's not a bunch of things in the way, it's just silt gets deposited on the land. So the very best thing we can do is quit building things in the flood plain. And in the course of the FERC licensing, we've, we committed to that idea. And committed to the idea that we would not be seeking modification to FEMA flood mapping and other regulatory elements, seeking any reduction in, in regulation based on this flood storage. This is about protecting what we have, which is important, obviously, with respect to the Anacortes Water Treatment Plant and a lot else. The remaining piece of the FERC licensing that hasn't been dealt with and remains a topic of negotiation is the question of fisheries mitigation. You know, there's, there's a competing narrative, the idea that City Light, you know, from the standpoint of local government, from the standpoint of the agencies and tribes, the idea here is, you know, we want to see fish passage at the dams. It's highly effective. The Baker relicensing, their dams were licensed in 2007. That run went from 100 fish to 65,000 this year. I mean, incredible results. You just don't see that in salmon country. And, you know, and then, as opposed to having Seattle spend its money on the Skagit Delta, the preferred alternative here, if you will, is, there's, we do need to deal with our marine Dyke Edge. Our big threat as a community over time is sea level rise and the marine Dyke Edge. You know, the marine environment is there every day. Flooding might happen once every 10 years, every single day when the tide comes in. The marine environment's a challenge. And so, you know, we've, we, we need to deal with this. We need a plan, a big picture plan. There's folks coming at us with money, mitigation money, federal, state money, different ideas, different people, and they all have their issue. The fact is, you know, threading together farmland preservation, habitat enhancement, regulatory requirements under the Endangered Species Act and the treaty, as well as dealing with the highly uncertain effects of sea level rise. The forecasts are from one to six feet over the next 100 years. What do you do with that? We need to bring that together into a coherent whole. This is all happening on the same 60,000 or so acres of land of the Skagit Delta. And, you know, principally speaking, the districts and the county are responsible for that infrastructure. And so we are moving forward with an integrated natural resources plan for the Skagit-Samish Delta to do exactly that. And we've extended an invitation to the treaty tribes principally. You know, the county and the, between the districts and the county, we own all this infrastructure. The delta is infrastructure, right? It's, it's a tidal flap, about half of it without it. And so we have applied for a grant to advance this, along with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Drainage Consortium, and the Upper Skagit Indian Tribe. And we've, you know, extending this invitation principally to our tribal partners, our treaty tribal partners, to, you know, incorporate the treaty right into a long-term plan for infrastructure, sea level rise, and the rest of it. And I think, you know, something like the City Light relicensing has certainly been an impetus, but it's also the case that this hasn't been possible before. We have, the delta is managed by these public entities, these districts, and, you know, there's, there's some, 16 of them, depending on how you categorize them, some 50 district commissioners. Even having a conversation about this kind of stuff was virtually impossible, let alone reaching consensus on anything important. So over the past 15 years or so, that's, you know, became increasingly clear. In, I think, 2017, 20, anyway, in 2010s, the consortium was formed, which is a public entity that represents the environmental and regulatory interests of all the drainage districts on the delta. And then the Dyke Partnership, which represents all the interests, regulatory and environmental interests of the districts along the main stem of the river. So the consortium is Jenna, and then the partnership is headed by Darrell. And the ability to consolidate that, and, and, you know, how closely we've worked together during the FERC licensing, I mean, just on a daily basis for four years, along with tribes and agency stakeholders, has really allowed us to, I think, formulate a very inherently local vision about how to carry this out. It's, you know, it's, it's really, at its center, it's about empowering our elected leadership, both the tribal and the, and the local level responsible for this infrastructure to work together over time for a long-range plan for this, this stuff. And it is, it is eminently possible. I think there's been a ton of conflict over the past 25 years. I think books can and probably will be written about it, and where it came from and why. But almost all of it was centered around the tribal and treaty desire to secure habitat enhancement on the Skagit estuary and delta. And so what we're trying to do here is to get at the core of that, because it is eminently possible. There are good things that can be done for fish. They have to be done in very specific ways, very carefully, and in very specific places. And they have to be done at scale, not individual parcels of land, but rather landscape scale, infrastructure that you're dealing with. So it has to be done at scale, and this requires a governmental response. We don't have that sort of thing yet, but that's what we're bringing forward, and so we'll be seeing more of that. With respect to the, I don't know, is there another slide? I guess there isn't another slide. With respect to the FERC process, as Darrell and Jenna alluded to, this is a tentative agreement. This will be brought together, hopefully, into a comprehensive settlement agreement with Seattle City, with Seattle, as well as the other stakeholders. And then that will get turned into their federal license. The goal, we'll see if it happens, but the goal is to get this done by the end of the year, and then it goes into NEPA review, environmental review, with the federal government. So this will be going on for quite some time, but we've got, you know, positive things going on. We've solved the flood issue, and we've got a way, we think, to bring everybody together on the Skagit Delta so that we can meet everybody's needs, including, in particular, the treaty tribes. That's all I have, and if there's any questions for any of us, invite them.
Okay, and I've, I've got an online participant that's patiently had their hand up. Did you want to comment on this item?
One more slide.
Okay, I'm here. Barbara Smart from Anacortes.
Hi, Barbara.
I'm just one of those horrible people. I'm a Seattle City Light brat. I grew up in New Halum and Diablo. And I know you guys have been going for years and years on flood risk, but one thing you have to change is on slide number six, you have Diablo Dam shown. Now, if you're going to name this, this whole thing Ross Dam, you should put a picture of Ross Dam.
I agree. I noticed that when, when we were talking about that.
Why would I trust your report if you can't even get a picture right?
It's a serious omission. We beg your forgiveness.
Okay. And also to point out to maybe the council to realize that Ross Lake is 24 miles long. Diablo Lake is only like four and a half mile, or seven miles long, and Gorged Lake is only like four miles long. So Ross Dam is, is the, you would never see, also, it's a beautiful picture of Diablo. They rarely ever spill wastewater off of a dam, mainly because it was, sort of erodes the base of the dam, and it looks really pretty in the picture. But generally, most of the water that they keep talking about drawing down is they, they run it through the powerhouses to generate electricity. And so that's just my other gripe. But just, don't forget that besides just flood control, it also produces a whole lot of clean, green electricity. So that's my gripe. So have a nice, great presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that picture was just grabbed off the internet for the, the presentation, and I was mortified when I saw, all the flood control does come from Ross. There's no element of the flood control picture that's from the lower two dams. She's right, Ross is vast in size compared to the other two. And, you know, you know, under federal law, flood control is the number one priority for this project. This project was cited on public land on the idea that it would benefit the public. Now, it, it provides about 33, 30 or so percent of Seattle's produced electricity. That's very important. We're very sensitive to that. Seattle's an important commercial hub, cultural hub, and many other things for our region. And, you know, what we are seeking is that Seattle, you know, provide a reasonable level of flood control, which they've agreed to, and that they contributed a, you know, collaborative, constructive, and regionally equitable level of fisheries mitigation. And of course, every other power producer in the Pacific Northwest are, for the most parts, installed fish passage. And, and so that's the ask. And I don't think anybody wants Seattle's, Seattle has some of the lowest power rates in the country. It's brought a lot of business, and we want to see that continue.
Well, the mislabeled photo doesn't take away from all of the great work that you all have done, so it's, it's okay by me. Ms. Miller. Mr. Young.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. You just had, I guess, a point to make that, you know, having served on farm board before I did, and also looking at the environmental impacts of tribal pushes for clean water, you know, the ying and the yang of how do we get to a solution? I know it's not, it's not an easy journey to get there. And, and I've paid close attention to many of the conversations that's been taking place over the years. But the good news is that we're working together. The good news is that there's progress being made in, on several attempts to sort of, in my, in my own words, harm the Skagit. Our Skagit rallied in such a big way, and so I really appreciate that about it. In, in speaking to this presentation and about the, you know, the storage, part of this is a forward look as we look toward what may be happening, given climate change, given, you know, the big burst one way or the other. But we are also, it also can help us, if you would, given that we are short the, the water that we normally would need, and I think that the forecasts are expecting a drier, you know, summer, in the sense that there may not be as much water as we would normally have, or snow pad to feed our rivers. So part of this, like you were saying, I think, is a good thing for those one days, but on the other days, we're expecting to have a drier summer, and so those negotiations will be critical to make sure that not only the salmon is preserved, but also the farmers have exactly the amount of water that they need. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, the water rights are not, water rights are not involved in this.
Would you speak just a little bit to the mic?
There we go.
You had me enthralled from the moment you started speaking, but I was having to listen.
Yeah, jumping, jumping to-
Yeah, jumping, jumping to the interests of Anacortes, you know, we all, you know, understand how important your water utility and water rights are, not just to the city and its budget, but to the area, the region, as Mayor Miller discussed. Water rights are not part of this relicensing. It's just not on the table. The question of water availability for delta irrigators is part of the discussion at the Joint Legislative Task Course that Darcy are participating in. I think that, you know, a little more tangentially, they are related, in the sense that, of course, the flood protection for the treatment plant, but, you know, the, the underlying drive behind the conflict over water, and I think Larry Wasserman would agree with this if you asked him, I know he said it to me, but, and that is, you know, the constraint on the availability of water isn't necessarily a physical limitation on water. It's just one of the most undersubscribed river systems, and it's the third-largest river system on the West Coast. It's really about seeking access to farmland for estuary and habitat improvement. And I think bringing us together and, you know, really creating a pathway to meet the tribes' needs in that respect will take a lot of this pressure off. And so it is connected in that way.
No, that, that was, that was what I was leading to, how they're all intertwined in this whole process. But, you know, one last little point that I want to make is that I was amazed that I've had guests in from other countries, other states, and every last one, especially this last month, has commented on the taste of Skagit's water being so delicious. And it was so stunning, because it was funny, because people from LA, the bottled water I was having in the airport was terrible. And so, you know, I just wish I could get bottled Skagit water, because it tastes so good, and everybody said the same thing. So, you know, the applause for us, but, you know, just finding a way to enjoy that good water is what I'm very appreciative of.
Skagit's the best place in the world, including its water.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Let's not talk too much about bottling the Skagit.
Yeah, that's true.
On slide five, there's a list of flood events in the last thirty-five years or so, and there are two major flood events in October. So this question is for any of the presenters to address, but clearly, we have achieved something significant here. But given climate change, and given that these numbers are going to be larger and maybe at different times of the year going forward, is it enough? And, and how do we know or not know?
Well, so the debate over the science, so Seattle was contending that climate change won't increase the size or the timing of atmospheric rivers much at all, and we, we relied on more current science that suggests twenty-five percent bigger and somewhat earlier. Over what time scale is obviously a relevant question. We, you know, there's this sort of chaos and uncertainty takes, takes over if you try to look too far into the future. But the, you know, this is, this was, climate change was a major part of our argument for this, to begin with.
So these two October floods in the early aughts, if we achieve this level of flood storage on November one, we're going to have close to that level in October that is sufficient to maybe handle these?
Right, it's not a switch. It's a, it's a drawdown curve, so it's, that drawdown's happening much earlier than November one. It's just that target is reached on November one.
And is it really that linear, as shown on the charts?
Not necessarily. I think Jenna could probably talk to that a little more. I'd leave it to our hydrological engineer.
Sorry, Ryan, can you repeat your question?
Your, your charts on slides ten and, ten and eleven just have a very linear drawdown to get to more flood storage by November one. Is it, is it really that straight line?
I don't think we've worked out the exact details yet, but the Corps of Engineers' water control manual just says, you know, a certain date and a certain elevation, and it's not daily, so you, in, in real life, it won't be straight, but the targets are pretty linear.
And the target is, is really just November one? On your next slide, you have several dates?
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying.
One other thing I can answer to that, Ryan, real quick, is that the 140 is pretty linear, because that's going to be, that's a regulated amount of storage by the Corps of Engineers. Anything outside that 140 is going to have the ability to be flexible based on input of water, the fish settlement agreement, and other factors, and that's why, that's why that's a negotiated and managed area.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, I, I think so. I think that eliminates a little bit more. And then the only other thing I just wanted to say is that I think Anacortes interests are very clearly tied to flood storage and flood management, flood risk reduction, but they are also tied to fish passage and the fisheries health of the river, and our interests don't end at flooding. Definitely, they are, they are tied to the fish as well.
Yeah, I hope you guys can feel confident that we reached a pretty good settlement here that was mindful and incorporated the fisheries interest in terms of the flow regime in the fall.
I think so, okay. Anything else for this topic? Again, great topic. Okay, well, thank you, thank you again, and thanks for the great work, and let, let us know if you need any, any more assistance. Okay, item six C is emergency medical services levy presentation. Yes, sir, I'm, I'm aware that you're here and you wanted to do some public comment, but I am going to run the meeting, and I'll have you go after this presentation, because we have guests here. Oh, you, you have a point on the flood control? Okay. Okay, come on up and state your name and your city, please, sir.
I'm offering a radical different concept.
Sir, I'm going to need your name.
My name is Joe Jokel. I reside over in Oak Harbor, Washington.
Okay.
And I have a different concept for flood control, okay? The concept is to maintain the reservoirs as dry lakes, okay? The owner still uses the land and uses it normally, and the valves are left open. Only when it has, only time they are closed is to prevent an immediate flood, okay? The landowner is paid a fee, like five percent of the market value of the land each year to have it available for flood control. This is a huge cost reduction, because land, land is, is cost, and because the, the owner still owns and uses the land as normal, this is a huge cost reduction for communities. And I would like to, I, I'd like to have, if I could, I'd like to, I've got a presentation and so forth. I got here late, my clock was off or something, but anyhow, I have a lot of material to cover here.
So you get three minutes like everybody else. Everybody gets treated the same. I know you have some material to give to council.
My hearing is terrible, I'm sorry.
So you have three minutes like everyone else gets. Three minutes, sir, three minutes.
Well.
You've got, you've got.
Can I have three minutes now and start on it?
I'll give you two minutes.
Okay. What I, I've got ten minutes worth of time. What I want to have invented, it's beyond belief. I have invented a solution to forest fires, earthquakes, and floods, and I have redesigned, I designed a new airport that has a single runway that is round and specially banked. I redesigned, I know it doesn't have anything to do with Anacortes business, but I redesigned the basic aircraft, okay? Well, the aircraft has two wings and no tails, but it flies fine without those two. But I want to talk about, in an earthquake design, okay, the current concept is to make it strong enough to withstand the shaking of the earthquake, okay? When you suspend the structure, the structure does not move in an earthquake. With no movement, it's earthquake-proof. This is critical. See, I'm here, what I'm, my objective here is get endorsements. I stand alone, and I can't get my work published, all right? All right? You can do, do several ways, there's a multitude of ways to suspend the structure. One of the common, one of the requirements is to have no foundation. A foundation ties the structure to the quake-moving earth, and, and it doesn't work, okay? So you can, you can, several approaches on, you can replace the foundation with designed springs and so forth that absorb, so the structure doesn't move in an earthquake. It's earthquake-proof. See, there was.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. You've come to the council before with the information, and I know you have some information to give to council. So your, your time is up. Your time is up.
Well, like I say, I'll, I'll give you my work, okay? And the other, one of the things I'd love to see this council look into.
Sir, your, your time is up. That means, that means you're.
I know, David, this is important though.
No, I, I understand. It's, it's very important. We have lots of other, we have four more very important items to go through.
Oh.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, item six C, emergency medical services levy presentation, and Chief Harris is going to introduce this one. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. As you know, the current EMS levy will be expiring at the end of this year, and there's a renewal, it'll be on the April ballot, it should be out shortly. Tonight, we have Skagit County EMS Director Josh Polonio here to talk about the details of that renewal, and then hopefully, after the presentation between the two of us, we should be able to answer most of the questions you'll have.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, mayor and council. Josh Polonio, Skagit County Emergency Medical Services. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and chat with you about the upcoming EMS levy renewal. So real quickly, Skagit County EMS is a department of Skagit County Government, and we're responsible for coordinating and overseeing a countywide coordinated emergency medical services system, and that system consists of two basic components. The first is basic life support, which uses emergency medical technicians, and the second is advanced life support, which uses paramedics. And we have both transport and non-transport agencies that participate, that serve the residents and visitors all across Skagit County. So Skagit County contracts with cities, towns, fire, districts, and other agencies to provide the service, and in 2023, our partner agencies responded to just over eighteen thousand calls, and about half of those resulted in ambulance transport to the hospital, either by ground or by air. So call volumes for EMS in Skagit County have increased by twenty-five percent in the last four years, whether responding to a mental health crisis in downtown Mount Vernon or a life-threatening medical emergency in the town of Concrete. Our EMS provider agencies are ready every day for every type of emergency across the county, and I wanted to show just kind of a geographical representation of what that actually means. So I know it's kind of hard to see the details, but I'm just going to kind of overview it for you. So we have five EMS transport provider agencies that provide advanced life support. Starting in the east part of the county, we have a nonprofit called Aeroskagit, and that is the, kind of the salmon pinkish color. In the center, we have the City of Sejre-Woolley Fire Department, which is the dark and light purple. Moving to the left, the, kind of the teal-blue is the City of Burlington Fire Department. Down below that is the City of Mount Vernon, and then obviously, to the far left, is the City of Anacortes. So those are ALS provider agencies that work together to ensure coverage for the entire county. Supporting those ALS transport agencies, we have about twenty other agencies, fire districts and town fire departments. They provide what we call first response services, so while they don't transport patients to the hospital, they do respond and provide initial stabilization and treatment and support those transport agencies. So in Skagit County, emergency medical services are funded by a voter-approved property tax levy, which is capped at fifty cents per one thousand dollars of assessed property value. Voters last renewed the EMS levy at a rate of forty-four cents per thousand in 2018, and since then, the rate has dropped to thirty cents, and that's as of this year. So as we know, levy rates fall as property values rise, so with the current assessed valuation as of this year, that rate has fallen from forty-four cents down to thirty So I wanted to chat a little bit about where those EMS levy funds are distributed. So if you see in the pie chart here, starting kind of at the top, Skagit 911, which is the public safety answering point that provides emergency communication services for all police, fire, and EMS agencies in Skagit County, with the exception of Washington State Patrol. They have their own user fee schedule, and that budget is, uses a formula that's comprised of fifty percent assessed valuation and fifty percent call volume. So the EMS levy actually pays for eighty-five percent of those 911 user fees on behalf of the EMS provider agencies.
If somebody can help me with it and move the chat box, thank you. So we can see your chart.
Oh, there we go.
I wasn't going to ask you to do.
No worries. I figured it out. So, yeah, so the Skagit 911 user fees, the reason that the EMS levy pays eighty-five percent is because if you look at all of the fire EMS calls in Skagit County, approximately eighty-five percent of those are actually EMS in nature. So just simple, simplify the math a little bit, the EMS levy pays for that initial eighty-five percent, and then the rest gets passed down to the, to the user agencies for the fireside. EMS administration is predominantly myself and my support staff, so I have three full-time employees. I have a training specialist that helps manage the ongoing training and certification of nearly five hundred EMS providers. That's emergency medical responders, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics. That ongoing training is required by state law. I also have a data specialist, so there's some new language coming up in Washington Administrative Code that will require all licensed EMS agencies in the state, whether they transport or not, to provide patient care data electronically to a state database for some public health surveillance and some other things. So part of that is helping those agencies manage that, those data reporting requirements. So we have a person who does that, and they also assist with managing statistics and quality assurance processes as well. And then we have an administrative coordinator. And then the other piece that comes out of EMS administration is we have two EMS physicians, and they provide oversight to the overall EMS system. And again, that function is delegated by the Department of Health and required by state law for, to oversee the EMS system. The EMS training component, so in addition to providing a countywide ongoing education program for our currently certified providers, we also provide access to an initial EMT training program through a partnership with Skagit Valley College. So they operate the program. We just provide the funding so that when we have, especially the, mostly the volunteer agencies, to kind of eliminate the barrier of them being able to get people that are trained and qualified to respond to calls, we provide that training through the EMS levy. We also provide access to public training. We do Stop the Bleed classes. We do, we help support the agencies who actually provide the first aid and CPR classes, and we also provide CPR training for the dispatchers at Skagit 911, which is a requirement for the emergency medical dispatch system that they use there. Four percent goes to what I mentioned, the first responder agencies with the BLS non-transport agencies, and that funding is primarily incentive for participation in the EMS system, so they receive some funding for disposable medical supplies, durable equipment, things like, you know, automated external defibrillators, oxygen, that sort of thing, to help be a partner in the EMS system. And then, as you can see on the chart, the vast majority, seventy-five percent, goes to the ALS provider agencies, which I showed on that map, one of which, obviously, being the City of Anacortes. So the EMS levy must be renewed by voters every six years to continue current service levels, and it's scheduled to expire at the end of 2024. The EMS renewal will continue to fund paramedics and emergency medical technicians, the medical education and training that I talked about, fuel, medical equipment, ambulance maintenance and replacement, and disposable medical supplies, as well as pharmaceuticals. So we, the Board of County Commissioners has passed a resolution to place the ballot measure on the April special election, and EMS levy rate request is at forty-seven cents per one thousand, which represents. which represents a 17 cent per thousand levy rate increase. This increase would cost the owner of a $555,000 home an additional $94.35 per year, or $7.87 per month for that 24/7 EMS response across the county. So again, it's a, it's a continuation levy, and it's a six-year, which will appear on the April 23, 2024 special election ballot. And that is all I have.
Thank you for the presentation, because I know we were getting a lot of questions. Obviously, we passed our public safety levy here in Anacortes, and this is a very different continuation, a very, a different levy, a countywide levy, I will remind everybody. Council, questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you tell us what the total amount of money the levy currently brings in?
Sure, so, in 2020, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but in 2024, it's right around 9.7 million.
And then what will it bring in with the new rate?
It'll be 14.4. So it's about, I think it's 4.7 is what it comes out to as an increase.
Okay. And then can you also describe then for us what that additional five or so, or four or five million dollars will be spent on, how it will be allocated?
Yeah, so currently, the intent is to maintain pretty much what we're doing now in terms of the percentages of where that money goes. One of the things, and I would defer to Chief Harris on the specifics of costs, but I can tell you that in general, what we've heard from all of our provider agencies is that expenses have increased, and another piece of that is the call volume, right? And so when your call volume increases, your expenses increase, your wear and tear on vehicles increases, and we've had a lot of challenges, both with medical supplies and medical equipment, as well as vehicles, which I'm, I'm sure you've experienced, the delays in manufacturing and that sort of thing. So, what we did when we put together the formula to kind of figure out what is the right rate, one of the things we looked at is projecting the call volume, what it is today, and what we think it's going to be in five years. And so when we take that and we also formulate, you know, we can see what percentage of total EMS dispatches result in a transport, and then we can also see roughly what the revenue, the reimbursement that comes in from those patient transports looks like. And so what we tried to do is forecast, what do we think the call volume is going to look like in five years? What percentage of that do we think is going to result in a transport? And then based on our reimbursement rates and what we think that's going to do, what does that look like? So you can see, it's, it's kind of a complicated, you know, projection to figure out, but ultimately the bottom line is that the cost to provide the service has gone up, and the need for the service has gone up.
And can you tell us what additional dollar amount Anacortes would receive upon passage of the new levy?
Yeah, good question. So currently, we, we don't have a specific number, that's one of the things that, you know, once we pass a levy and we have a better idea what the overall budget looks like, similar to the last time we did this process, this process last in 2018, we will sit down with the provider agencies and kind of figure out an equitable funding formula to make sure that everybody is, you know, a big part of it is, you know, that countywide model, everybody provides service, but not everybody has the same call volume or the same expectation, so we need to look at the system as a whole to make sure that we can fund the whole system, and part of that is working collaboration with those entities on what their needs are to serve those, that population, and we'll come to that.
Okay. All of that sounded good, except for the part where you said we will figure it out later. I mean, why, why wouldn't we have it already figured out?
Well, there's a lot of-
Because we've already asked for a rate. We've set the rate.
Sure.
So, why don't we have it? I mean, costs are going to change, things are going to have to fluctuate.
Yeah.
But shouldn't we at least have the formula figured out?
We do not currently have a funding formula as far as the distribution, we have a rough idea what funds will be available for all of the transport providers, but the challenge is that in addition to the five city, or the five, the four cities and the one nonprofit that we contract with, we also contract with 20 other fire districts, and so all of that needs to kind of come together, and so it's, it's, currently, there's a lot of moving parts to figuring out exactly what that's going to look like.
Is there any memorandum that describes how we arrived at the levy rate?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware.
I mean, I would, I would just expect that there is some document that describes how we got from what the current rate is to-
Sure.
-what rate we're asking the voters now.
Yeah, I mean, we have financial formulas and things, projections, it has the call volume stuff that I talked about, that has the transport rate, the reimbursement that each of the agencies has brought in, that sort of thing, so yeah, we could probably come up with something to share that information with you.
Okay. I'm principally looking for a historical document, something that would have existed at the time at which that rate decision was made.
Because you're, you're, I mean, you're trying to do reimbursement predictions for six years in the future, and I realize that's challenging, but I think Mr. Walters' point is we probably have some of that data.
Sure.
Mr. Young. And Mr. Young, and then Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. You know, I, you know, I want to echo the questions that Mr. Walters put forward, those would be things that I would be very much interested in. You know, I think the challenge for me personally is that not only are we coming on the tail end of the levy lid lift, but we also had the school district, we have the tipping fees that are about to rise, housing development, I believe the pool is going to be coming forward, and I wouldn't be surprised if the hospital, which, you know, hospitals are in, need help at this point, and I wouldn't be surprised if they also come forward. So, in one way, I am exhausted of tax increases, I think I echo the sentiment of the wonderful lady in back, Ms. McCoy, who was mentioning the fact of taxes and how that's been a growing concern here in Anacortes, and I'm sure across the country. But at the end of the day, for me, what I would be looking for, because I'm, you know, supportive of the work that you do, you guys do an extraordinary job, and just trying to figure out how do we quantify what this additional rate increase would mean, and if it is absolutely necessary now versus maybe a little later. I think everybody has to tighten up on their budgets just a little bit, just simply where we're going, you know, as deficits and, you know, the challenges that the city face by way of the trend that we are seeing in revenues coming in too. So for me, all of those things come into play. So what I would like to see more of is that we show where that 17 cent additional would matter, and I appreciate what you said, though, even though we've, in this city, have had other agencies give us a number and say, hey, look, we're, we're not asking for the big number, we're asking for a reduced rate, but the thing I appreciated about what you said was, it was cognizant of the fact that the value was higher, so the rate could be lower, and it sort of gives it that accurate picture. So, what I'm saying to you is that's what I'm looking for, and from what I, I think I understood from Mr. Walters, you know, those are additional questions and formulas that we would be, at least I would be looking to see, and I think that the public would as well. And I think if we can quantify that, show the absolute need is now versus the ability to simply be able to ask and get, then we have a, we have a discussion. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation as well. I think I know the answer to this, but just in case, the, the rate increase would, that happens all at once at the beginning, right? It's not sort of like a graduated thing where it's four cents a year for the next four years, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, it would be in year one of the levy renewal, and then it would be subject to the 1% increase after that, depending on what values you-
Got it. So generally speaking, like our, you know, the cost curve is doing something like this, or maybe it's like that, left to right, and that increase, because it's like an immediate bump, do we run a surplus for two, two and a half years and then kind of even out, and then the, basically, the rate doesn't all cover the full cost for, say, the last couple of years, but because we've run that surplus in the first couple of years, does it, does it even out? Is that the target?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, yeah, so the initial rate funds at the higher rate, based on the fact that, I mean, we don't know what values we're going to do, but obviously we want to maintain a healthy reserve, and I think the Commissioner's policy currently is we maintain a six-month reserve in the EMS fund as far as one year's worth of expenses. So that, I know, has kind of been planned for. Outside of that, I do not know.
Okay, okay, cool. Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So I just want to, I think that when folks hear about another EMS levy, it gets a little confusing about what we just passed, specifically in the, in the City of Anacortes, right? And that was for fire and police within the city limits. So only property owners who live in the city limits were, are paying that new levy. This, though, I just wanted for clarification, when it's a transport, it's regardless of whether or not you're in the city limits or in the county, everyone's paying into this and everyone receives this service. Is that correct?
Yeah, so regardless of transport, the EMS levy, so there's kind of two separate funding sources, right? You have the EMS levy, which contributes to the provision of the service, and then you separately have transport billing, right? So if somebody gets transported to the hospital, then the City of Anacortes would bill their insurance company based on a set fee schedule that every, every provider in the county uses, and so that generates transport revenue, but that's totally separate from the EMS levy portion of it. Does that make sense?
Yes. So then this levy is really so that someone shows up at your house-
Correct.
...assesses your current situation and determines whether or not you need to then go to the hospital and utilize, use your insurance to pay for it. Is that correct?
Correct. Whether you live in the city or not, yeah.
Okay.
So everybody in the county pays into the EMS levy, and the EMS levy is used to compensate the providers of that service, but then those providers separately would bill if there is a transport to the hospital.
So there's no other, I mean, I guess I'm trying to get at that if you live in the city limits, you're not paying it through another, this is the mechanism to pay for that service, to show up. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's nice to hear that it's only $100 more, but if I'm doing a $550,000 house, right now it's $165, if I did back the napkin math, it will now go up to $258, and that's, that's a chunk of change. I mean, it's $100 more, but we have to remember that it also is more than just $100. I just want that clear. Thank you.
All right. This is open for public comment, I'll come back to the council, but members of the public wish to comment on this item, and I think we got one. Yeah, come on up, and I think you know the rules.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Wim Hooperman, so I live in Anacortes. I'm a property owner, and I am taxed for about $555, $555. I, I never want to end up in an ambulance, and, but I do want EMS services, not, not just for me, but really for everyone, and I'm just coming up here to say that I'm in full support, and if it takes a levy, it takes a levy, and I'll approve it. I'll vote for it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, come on up. Sorry, I guess you can't see if anybody's behind you.
Connie Russell, Anacortes. Just an observation of the dollars that were quoted of what this new levy for AMS would result in, it happens to be about a 48% increase, which just happens to be the dollar increase for the levy, the uplift levy resulted in from 2023 to 2024. So I am surprised that those numbers are so close, and just like to comment, I would definitely like to hear more information about what this size of a levy would really do to increase our services. Thank you.
Thank you. Check online. All right, no one, Council, any other questions before we let Mr. Polonio go? Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I just would like to reiterate the point that I do think it is valuable to clearly communicate the value that we are getting for the, especially for the additional levy rate, but also the, the value that we're getting for the EMS system overall. We have run levy lid lift, affordable housing sales tax, pavement management sales tax recently, and it might just be my personal philosophy, but I believe that we excelled with those because we told the voters precisely what we were going to do with the money in each instance. For the levy lid lift, we said we are going to hire eight firefighters and five police for the affordable housing sales tax. We said we're going to do three projects, and here are the pictures of those projects. For the pavement management sales tax, we said we are going to get rid of the car tab, which we did, and we're going to spend $1.8 million a year on pavement management, paving new roads. So we provided a lot of specificity, and I think that that most certainly contributed to those measures' success. I want the EMS system to be successful as well, I think we all do. We have to have it, and it has to be successful. And so I, I think it would be very useful for us to be able to say, you know, this is the breakdown of what we're getting today, this is how the costs are going up. I think your, your presentation covered some of the mechanics of the levy lid lift rate, or the levy rate, but the expenses, their dollar numbers, and their trends over time might be useful, and then will there be, or, or is there going to be an increased level of service as a result of the new levy rate? I think that those components are, are pretty critical to selling this to the voters.
So we, so we like our details in Anacortes, but then I was going to ask the question, but it seems like you've answered it on your last slide. Learn more at www.skagitcounty.net/EMSlevy. And all those additions are going to be, oh, no, we'll take more questions, I was just making a comment, that, that's, that's a good place where you're going to be able to continue to populate this with more information, I trust?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's not static?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's being updated, yeah, and I think the only thing I would add is, you know, one of the challenges is from, from the county's perspective, we don't manage the expenses of the individual provider agencies, and so I, I would just add that, you know, Chief Harris can probably provide some more context to where those funds are actually being used. From the county's perspective, you know, we're providing the funding for the specific things that I broke down, and then we're providing the funding for the provider agencies, but we don't have any control over, you know, how many, and I couldn't tell you how many ambulances are being purchased, or how many cardiac monitors need replacement, I know that they do, but I'm not responsible for those, the county doesn't manage that process, and so that really falls to the individual provider agencies to kind of advocate for where that funding is needed.
Yeah, and I'm confident Chief Harris could tell us also what the impact would be of not having that levy renewed as well, which I think is valuable. Mr. Fantini.
Thank you. My question was, so it says that call volumes have increased by 25%. I appreciated the clarification from Councilmember Cleland McGrath about transports, and is that, have transports also increased by 25%? Or is that-
Yeah, so that's a good question. The actual transport, the percentage of EMS dispatches that result in a transport has actually maintained relatively static, it's between 40, 45, 50%. So the, the number of people going to the hospital has stayed pretty much the same, despite the fact that the number of calls, requests for service have gone up.
Okay, and then one other just clarifying question. So, house, house prices went up, the, the levy amount went down, so we're going to increase it, or we're going to ask to increase it by 17 cents, up to that 47 cents, and then each year for the next five years, it just automatically increases by 1%? Is that how that works?
No, so the, the Board of County Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Board of County Commissioners has to vote to authorize that 1% increase that's allowed by law.
So the county commissioners vote each year to increase by, by 1%?
Correct.
Okay, I also would like to know consequences if we don't pass this also, so thank you for asking.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
Can someone quickly answer that question? The, the amount of money the EMS levy provides to Anacortes' EMS budget each year?
Yeah.
Chief Harris, we'll put him on the spot.
Happy to do it. No, so in the 2024 budget, it was just, just, it's $1,518,000 came into our budget that we planned on for, and just for similar numbers, it's about, we bill about just over $2 million, but we only get about half of that back. So it's a significant, the EMS portion of our budget total is about 6.3 million, and so that 1.5 is about 24% of that, it's a significant impact, and it's about, I did this math a while back, so don't quote me exactly, but the amount that the levy- amount that the levy brings in is almost exactly the same as what we increased by Proposition 1. I mean, so the impact, if it were to go away, that simply would be, would put us back to about where we were prior to Proposition 1, back to the same staffing levels of six versus eight, things like that. Again, within that 6.3 million of ambulance services, about 4.5 million are personnel costs. So there's not a lot of cushion, there's not a lot of other things we can cut, very few discretionary costs.
Uh, thank you. I think that those numbers are critical and I would also say that if the EMS levy were to go away, we would have, uh, secondary effects too of not being able to have other providers in the county be able to fill in for us when, when we need that. Um, it would, it would be a very bad thing, uh, on any number of levels, but, um, for us to understand what the fiscal impact to the city's budget is, I think is critical. So thank you for that.
If I might add us one more, as, versus, uh, I would be fibbing if I didn't say, I haven't been thinking about service improvements and assuming this levy passes and it passes at 47 cents and, and when we find out what that means to the city of Anacortes.
Little closer on the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thought I nailed it this time. The, the, and that's where, over the next few months, as we develop our next comprehensive plan and the six-year plan that goes along with that and in the budget workshops later this spring, um, I have some more thought to put into that, but I do have proposals for council, but the, the one that immediately jumps to mind, as you recall, our discussions last fall about the new ambulance, putting the fourth ambulance into service with ERNR, I was holding off on that with the intent of utilizing, um, the bump in funds to, to accommodate that without cutting into any other fees. That, that's a short example.
Uh, great. And anything else before we move off of this topic? All right. Thank you. I appreciate the info and, uh, April ballot. Okay, uh, next up is item 6D. This is a contract award for a debt internet access, NOANET. And this is a discussion item with possible action and Ms. Hsu will be presenting.
Thanks for your patience. I was pulling up the slide and appreciate the opportunity to bring this contract forward to council and the mayor and the, the audience tonight. Uh, tonight I'm bringing forward a contract to continue to build on our network diversity and redundancy. So the, the city contracts with multiple service providers to ensure that we have diverse paths and upstream, upstream internet connectivity. And, uh, the, the contract tonight is for increasing our dedicated internet access threshold. This is a good news story as our network continues to grow, the, the need for additional direct internet access continues to grow. So our peak download traffic is currently eight to nine gigabits in the, the evening time. Uh, we were over 9.96, um, gigabits per second during the Super Bowl. We currently have, uh, two different DIA contracts available to us. One has a maximum capacity of 10 gigs and the other has a maximum capacity of seven gigs. What we're asking tonight is to increase the, the contract with NOANET, to, to move that from seven gigs to 12 gigs. That will continue to provide the symmetrical service and it will be moving it to a larger, um, format that we can work with that will have 100 gigabit per second interface. So it continues to increase our modular ability to, to grow the, the network. I thought that it'd be helpful just to, to look at where we are from a business perspective right now. At the end of business today, we had 2,311 customers in, in service. That's bringing in over $144,000 per month. That is a combination of, um, 2,137 residential customers, 174 business customers and then other contract, other customers who have direct internet access and dark fiber agreements specifically with the, the city. In the areas that we currently have service, we are averaging about 50% take rate. As you remember, our business plan called for a 35% take rate. So almost half of the, the homes where we offer, or neighborhoods where we offer service, almost half of them are signing up for service with, with the city of Anacortes. So currently we have 63% of the, the city's orders, the 2,000, um, I'm sorry, 3,691 customers, uh, 63% of those are in service, providing us with 2,311 customers. So tonight what we have before you, the, the terms of the contract, um, is for, uh, a change to our city's master service agreement. To be able to, to sign up for this 12 gig of service, we are entering into a 36-month term at $3,450 per month. This is our updated map and the areas in green are our current service areas. So we are, um, really moving forward with our goal to provide internet service to all of the city of Anacortes. Tomorrow we have our pre-construction meetings for the EDA area, that gray area, and construction should begin late, uh, late this month.
Many of us in the gray area are very excited about that. All right, uh, questions from Ms. Hsu on this contract?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Um, I just kind of have a question about like operations wise. So when we go over, like during the Super Bowl, does that incur additional cost or does that like slow it down, make it more risky of the system going down or what are the consequences when we go over that seven?
We projected that there may be, um, you know, a lot of usage during that time with the, the streaming of the, of the, the Super Bowl. And so we opened up some additional space. Uh, so we had both the DIA routes open to be able to ensure that there was no down, downturn in coverage.
Mayor Miller?
Ms., uh, Moulton, sorry.
Thanks. Um, thank you, Ms. Hsu, for your presentation. It's good to see the updated numbers of the take rate and the percentages and all those things. Uh, what, how does this compare the new contract to what we're paying now currently?
You know, I include that information in the, the materials that were part of the, the, the contract. I'm sorry, didn't include that here and I don't have it right in front of me. Um, it, it, these are reasonable prices for, in my perspective, um, in comparison to, to what we are currently, um, paying to the, the two DIA providers.
Mayor Miller? Yeah. Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I think kind of the going rate for say a, a 10 gigabit direct internet service is roughly 2,500 to 3,000 a month and because this is more than 10 gig and because it's on 100 gig physical port, you know, I would expect it to be kind of a, a bit above 3,000. So it's, uh, it's in line.
Okay.
Um, just to clarify, Ms. Hsu, it is on a, it's on 100 gigabit port, but it's rate limited to 12 gig. That, that's still allowed to burst, you know, temporarily burst above the 12, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And this gives us the ability, because it's on a physical 100 gig port, um, it's really just like when we do need to increase capacity to 15 or 20 gig, the, uh, the provider can just do like a, essentially a, um, a software change that is like hitless or, you know, non-service impacting. Um, and we can grow that up to 100 gig. So we've got like lot, lots of ceiling for this now.
Thank you. And Ms. Moulton, you were asking the current versus the, what this contract will be difference. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I'm satisfied with the answer. I, I do not see it in the agenda bill or the materials, so that's why I was, yeah. But, so thanks for, thanks for filling me in on that.
And I'm happy to, to follow up with you and, and counsel about that as well.
Between you and Mr. McDougal, I feel like my question has been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Uh, Ms. Hsu, can you talk to the geographic diversity and the redundancy between the two different providers and how that's going to work and how it has worked?
Um, and so as we've been evaluating our, our DIA providers, then we have two different, um, diverse paths. Then it's, um, one goes through Oak Harbor, would be island, and then another goes along Highway 20. So we are really working to, to have additional diversity in, in that pathway, um, to ensure redundancy. If one goes down, the other should stay up.
And between the two providers, is there any common, uh, point of failure? Uh, is it, is it, is it a single provider upstream at some point where if that one goes down, we could lose both paths?
There, there's always the, the possibility that along the I-5 corridor, that there's going to be areas where those, uh, those paths intersperse. Um, we've, we've added as much diversity as, as we can for, for the time being.
Okay.
I'm happy to be corrected, but I think you meant to say La Con or not Oak Harbor?
Uh, no, actually through would be island.
All right, great. Good to know. All right. Mr. Young?
Uh, and short of any other questions or, um, comments, I move that city council authorized the mayor to sign contract number 24-102-FBR-001 with Northwest Open Access Network in the amount of $124,200 for direct internet access DIA service.
Second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. McDougal to award the, uh, contract as presented to Northwest Open Access Network, the amount of 12420, uh, 124200. Any additional comments or discussion? Mr. Franciac, go please.
Mr. Young, yes. Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hsu. And, uh, next up is 6E, another contract award. This is a stormwater master plan update and discussion item, possible action, and Mr. Raym's already here, ready to talk to you.
Ready to go. Uh, Mayor, Council, good evening. Andy Raym, Public Works Director. Uh, this item, uh, before he is a contract with Osborne Consulting in the amount of $481,510 to develop a citywide stormwater master plan. The city, um, last updated its master plan in 2007. A lot has happened in the stormwater world since then. Um, the technologies have gotten better, the stormwater regulations have certainly changed and so we feel it's a definite, uh, a need that the city needs. Uh, the stormer master plan, stormwater master plan will inform the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. It'll also produce a model of the stormwater system so we can better, uh, understand what the impacts are of new development that come into the city. Um, and that will be, uh, nice because right now developers actually have to create their own and then we have to check that instead of just having them use our, our model. The, uh, the last piece to point out to you is the, uh, the works, the last plan really didn't talk about the receiving waters, which obviously we have the Sailor Sea, we have lakes, we have streams. And so, uh, one of the elements of this is to evaluate the impacts of stormwater on all those natural assets, uh, as well as just kind of understanding the health of those, uh, water bodies. And that's it. That's what I have.
Questions from Mr. Raym?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Um, why Osborne Consulting and, um, and no cost comparison? I, I know you put a lot of thought in and I know you've done all the due diligence, but I think it's important if we sort of say, why Osborne and then, you know, just that this is a good deal for us and by way of the money that we will be spending for this thing.
Sure. So we, we did look at a few different firms and we met and interviewed them. Uh, we decided Osborne Consulting because of the, um, the qualifications of the firm. They had a really good, a kind of robust team that they were gonna put at this project. Uh, they were able to meet our timeline as well to get it done, to inform the, uh, capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. So kind of those two things in general were why we went with them. Um, hope that.
No, it, it does. I, I went out to their website and I sort of pulled to see, you know, the, the staff, the team, the stuff that they've done and, but I was just curious and I just thought it would be important for the public to be made aware as well as us to understand why you chose them versus someone else.
I have a little history with Osborne Consulting. I've worked with them and with other cities and they just do good work, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Raym. I see, it looks like we're getting a grant from the Department of Ecology for $130,000 of the roughly $481,000 cost.
That's correct, yeah. That's a capacity grant, so when they give us, they issue us the municipal stormwater permit, they give us a little bit of money, just like every city in the state that has a permit, and so we've used that money to fund this.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Anything we need to bring back?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Thank you. Um, I just have a question. So, uh, just as far as process, like how this works, we enlist them and then they go through and, cause since we haven't done this for 17 years, like, can you kind of just walk me through like what the steps are that are, that are going to happen?
Sure. Uh, so there, it hasn't been done in 17 years here, so there's definitely room for discussion about what the council would like to see. Typically what we would do is we go through the process of developing the stormwater master plan. We'd have a draft and we'd bring it before the council. You'd have to, you don't have to technically, but we would like you to approve the plan because it does provide us a 10-year kind of blueprint of what we're gonna do in the stormwater utility. Um, and that's obviously gonna be constrained financially, so you gotta, we, we want you guys to weigh in on that before we actually approve the plan. So there'll be, we talked about doing pub, there'll be some public engagement as well. We're thinking of online open house. Uh, we might hold a, you know, um, a, a meeting where people could come in person and provide, provide input on what they think should be in the plan, uh, or respond to the plan, how we draft it. Um, I've seen all those things, not too many people get super excited about stormwater I've seen in the past, so I wouldn't go too crazy with the public involvement, but definitely there's some people that are gonna be very.
Well, no, we'll, we'll get people engaged in this one.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Um, did, did I answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I can think of a few people in my neighborhood that would be very excited to come tell you about the flooding that they've seen over the last 17 years, uh, uh, in their, their yards. And so I'm just, so there will be an opportunity for the public to take part and.
I put that in all the plans that I'm bringing forward, including the one on the next, on the agenda. Um, in all the consultants' contracts, they have a public engagement.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I thought I, oh, I thought I saw somebody walking up that typically we don't do, uh, public comment for contracts, but if you're really itching, uh, I'm sure the council would be happy to hear from you to talk about a contract. I think there's some legal concerns about debating points of contract, but come on up, yeah. Uh, I, I think council will allow, will allow that. I'm going with that.
I'll just make this quick. My name's Marlene Finley. I'm a citizen of Anacortes. I'm on the board of directors for Evergreen Islands and we, um, would like to see public engagement and I didn't see that in the contract specs. So, um, just note that we would like to be involved early in the process in the scoping. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms., uh, Moulton?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that we spoke about in the Public Works Committee that we were excited about seeing this come forward. Um, one is the stormwater infrastructure repair and replacement program. So it's a plan to inspect and assess and make recommendations for what needs to be, what needs to be fixed. And then the development of the stormwater model to identify the deficiencies in the system and areas that we can improve, um, across the city. So that's going to be, those are gonna be two really great things that we don't have right now. So that will be great moving forward.
Mayor Miller? You can probably emphasize, how many years has it been since, uh, the plan? One more time?
I got 17 years.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna try to catch all of this stuff. Mr. Walters?
Uh, there, there is material in the plan, task 700, that has some education and outreach components and open house, that kind of thing. It, uh, maybe there are other components as well in here in the contract. Uh, I do concur with my colleagues that it will be important for the public to be able to communicate to us about drainage problems that they have, to make sure that those are addressed in the plan. And then also, one of the outputs of the plan is the list of capital projects that need to get done. It, the contract suggests that they'll generate an unprioritized list of capital projects. That's fine. We then need to prioritize them, and we need to ensure that those contracts are accomplished or that those projects are accomplished. Because some of them, as we have talked about a couple of times, are constraints on development, including, including housing development in the areas where it's most appropriate. So we need, we need to take a hard look at those when it does come back to us. Otherwise, I think the contract as presented is fine, and I would move its approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the contract award Stormwater Master Plan Update 24103 STM 001. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I would just like to reiterate, I, online participation is, is great. It's a nice component option to have, but we definitely need to have a roundtable discussion with the public, bringing forward a number of different issues. Based on the last, the meeting we had last week, you know, the people who live here do, can identify some of the, the pain points when it comes to these issues, the stormwater issues that may not show up once in a while when we've got a consultant here for a window, right? And then also, I, I really am excited to have some stormwater plan. So when folks come in and look at parcel, they know what the, what type, the scope of work that's going to be needed to be able to develop that parcel. I think that's, as we, as we work on our comprehensive plan and as we keep telling folks in our community that we need to increase density versus sprawl, which we are really limited to based on the Growth Management Act, then we need to be good partners as a city and show, you know, do the projects that will have the greatest impact and, and really help facilitate in our capacity that development can happen where it makes the most sense. So I'm excited to see this work in tandem with our comprehensive plan, and I hope that that will all lend itself well to one another.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the contract award Stormwater Master Plan Update. Mr. Franciac.
Mr. Walters? Yes. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're on to item 6F, a contract award, Transportation Master Plan. So discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Rayum is still here because you got it.
Still here. Last agenda item. Uh, before you is a contract with Transpo Group in the amount of $308,175 to develop a citywide transportation master plan. This will be the first transportation master plan developed in the city, for, for what we understand. The transportation master plan will also meet all the requirements and be the transportation element in the 2045 comprehensive plan. For this plan specifically, there will be a significant public involvement process to make sure we capture what the community would like their transportation system to be in the future. In addition to meeting all the requirements of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, the transportation master plan in addition will prepare a six-year transportation improvement program to meet requirements of the RCW and identify the city's transportation funding priorities and financial strategy to implement transportation capital projects. It will prepare roadway cross-sectional design standards to identify key design elements when building or reconstructing a designated arterial or collector roadway. It will prepare policy guidance for alley access requirements. It will update the city's development review process to be consistent and supportive of the comprehensive plan. And last, it will update the city's transportation impact fee program to support the long-term transportation vision focused on proportionality and predictability for developers or landowners and incorporate the latest requirements adopted by the state legislature. Just one little note as well is Transp, the Transpo Group is also doing the county comprehensive plan transportation element, so one of the requirements is to be in alignment with the county, and so that alignment will be seamless with, because we're using the same consultant. And that is my presentation.
Thank you. Council, questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I appreciate the very robust public involvement from the in-person meetings, the community event meetings, four city council meetings. I think that's a really great way to start this project. If, if we move forward with the contract, when will this start? Will it be pretty immediate, in a few months?
Yeah, we need to get going because we need to be in line with the comprehensive plan update.
Okay, and then the, the second question I have is, there's a lot of big projects right now in the city that are on the table, like the Roundabout Commercial Avenue. Will this take into account those projects? Will it give like alternate ideas or like what?
I think this is a good opportunity for the city to look at all their transportation projects, especially, I mean, if we built it, it's kind of built. But anything else is fair game for the community to weigh in and figure out what it is that we want the transportation system to be going forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Uh, no, I wanted to, you know, thank Mr. Fantini for the questions, and that was sort of what I was thinking about myself. But what this will allow is the opportunity to participate, you know, whether we get event space or whether we get some other thing that decides that it wants to come to Anacortes. Part of that is that forward-thinking look about what our transportation would need and that at these meetings, those are the things that will be kind of flushed out. And then in that plan to come forward, it would include all of those possibilities, including, you know, populations, whether, you know, the islands explode and growth and all those things. Okay, no, I'm, I'm happy. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I really appreciate the robust multimodal component of this transportation plan, including the existing conditions analysis to update transportation maps, including our sidewalk inventory map, which I know is something that is near and dear to Mr. Walters's heart. Also, developing multimodal levels of service standards. So establishing a citywide active transportation network that includes connections to state highways and, and adjacent jurisdictions, which I think is fantastic. Also, just another bullet point I'd like to call out is identify existing unopened right-of-ways across the city and consider whether these connections should be a complete street or a pedestrian bicycle connection. I personally know of quite a few of these. I think a lot of us do when we're rambling around town when we're not in our cars, and I think that that would be great to pursue those in a more formal way. And, and the list kind of goes on, including develop recommendations for funding strategies for multimodal and active transportation projects. So when I see this, I, I really am optimistic that this is going to lead to some real positive changes as we work hard to reduce our vehicle miles traveled and our greenhouse gas generation and become a more walkable, bikeable city as we are, have been on the path to doing. So to me, this is, this is an exciting opportunity, and I'm grateful that we can move forward with it.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I just have a kind of off-the-wall question. So all of these plans are great, but is there any way we integrate these into the ARC GIS system when we talk about, when we get this feedback of kind of prioritizing projects, either in this specific, the transportation plan or the stormwater master plan? Is there any kind of plan to do that?
So I'm a big fan of making maps, speak a thousand words. So, uh, yes, especially with stormwater, we, you guys already passed the wastewater one, but it'll help is if a developer goes to look, they'll see on the map where we have a deficient pipe, whether it's wastewater or, or stormwater. So they'll know, like, that's in their front edge, that's something that needs to be addressed. Or we address them ahead of time and tick them off the list and take them off the map as we go. But, yeah, mapping is really important in this exercise.
So will, will we have, like, public work staff put in, putting it into the maps or will that be included in the consulting doing that?
They, they generate the, the map data, and then we pull it into our GIS enterprise system here at the city.
Yeah, doing that inventory will be helpful to improve our, our GIS. We're, they're, they're always working to add things.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I don't see anything requiring changes to the contract here, but one of the components of the contract is work on transportation impact fees. And a, a number of us have talked about our desire to be able to adjust impact fees based on a, a more accurate reflection of the impact of new housing units, specifically based on square footage of housing units. And a, a bill passed last year provides specific authority for us to set impact fees based on square footage. So when we get to the stage at which we do start talking about impact fees, I think council, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think council expects for us to look at impact fees a little differently than we have in the past and try to achieve an impact fee that is a smaller fee for a smaller value, but not specifically value, but smaller square footage residence, so that we can reduce the cost of development of, of housing that could then be more affordable. That doesn't go just for transportation, but all for, all of our impact fees. But since we're talking about this one now, I thought I'd mention it to make sure it's top of mind for everybody.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because, yeah, what they do, we'll look at, like, we want to, if we want to do everything, well, this is the impact fee. But if you want an impact fee for different costs, for different types of development, that would be important to bring forward now, so we don't say we're doing all these things and then we don't have the funds.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move that the city council authorize you to sign contract 24098 TRN 001 with Transpo Group in the amount of $308,175 to perform the transportation element of the 2025 comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve the contract as presented to Transpo Group. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Just one public comment that I did want to acknowledge that suggested that in Task 3 under Update, the Transportation Element Goals and Policies, the contract language says, "Review the goals and objectives of the transportation element to make sure that they are consistent with the land use element of the comprehensive plan." And the public comment was, "Well, they need to be consistent with the entirety of the comprehensive plan." Completely agree. I think we all understand that. I don't think we need to change the text here, but I just wanted to acknowledge that that, that is quite a valid concern.
Okay, thank you. So motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young. Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, a lot of business, but being no further business for the council, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a good night.